Good evening. I'd like to call to order this budget workshop meeting for Tuesday, April 24th. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Testa?
Sandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We have three departments on the agenda for tonight. They are all on page 44 of your budget book, the Social Services Contributions page. And the first department... We are going to skip Wallingford Center, Inc. and come back to it. And we are going to skip the Wallingford Facade Capital and come back to it. So we are starting with the Wallingford 2020 Committee. Evening. Please identify yourselves for the record.
Christine Mansfield, Co-Chair.
John Sullivan, Parade Chair.
Bob Devaney, Co-Chair.
Welcome. Would you like to start with an introduction or would you like to go right to the questioning? Okay. Questions for 2020. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'll recognize your faces from somewhere. You know, as I go through the budget book, I see backup for a lot of the items that are in the budget, and I see a $45,000 appropriation to your group. But I don't know what it's for because there is no backup. So how did there end up being a $45,000 appropriation in our budget?
I'll respond to that if I may. The $45,000 is specific to the parade. The parade is a cost item, total cost. And I approached the mayor about a month ago, and I asked, he set money aside. I looked for $100,000. The mayor was kind enough to put $45,000 aside. We're looking at items such as transportation, communications, security, portable bleachers, all kinds of things to support the parade. And the $45,000 will be used for that.
So I was recently in the town clerk's office, and I looked at the minutes that are at least in the town clerk's office for your group. And I didn't see anything where there was a meeting, a debate, an offer, a suggestion to go to the town. Because I know you're doing your own fundraising, and my understanding is you've done a pretty good job with that. But I didn't see anything where the body talked about, you know, let's go to the town, this is the amount. Did that ever occur? I just, I don't have anything other than $45,000. Was there a meeting? Was there a debate? Were there documents?
I'm not, no. Let me be clear. I was asked to be chair about two months ago now. I think we've had two or three meetings in that time. We are still trying to put our business organization together. I probably have 30 positions right now that I need to fill. I was asked to deliver a number for this year's budget. I should say next year's budget. Initially, I was looking for $100,000 again. I'm repeating myself. The mayor, I'm sure he's going to put in, or he did, he's proposing $45,000 for this budget year we're approaching. I'm sure we will be seeking more. So as far as costs right now, Counselor Fishbein, I don't have dollar numbers right now. We are working on that. We're two years out. I'm still putting together my business organization. I could have refrained from asking for money this budget year and just come up next year and said, now, Mayor, I need $100,000. Because now we're a year closer to that parade. And now we've got a budget in the 2019-2020 budget season. So I would anticipate I'm going to be working through the school system for transportation, trying to buy into their contract, and try to work every way I can to save money. But I've got to have money to start lining up some of these big-ticket items. And I don't know what the cost is yet. The $45,000 is kind of a placeholder. As far as the meeting, at the time, it was, I had informed my committee at the March 28th meeting, the April 11th meeting was canceled, that I would be going to see the mayor. And I did. We haven't had a meeting since. So that may be why you didn't see it in the minutes.
Okay. So is it fair to say, because I know the last time I saw a treasures report, I think, for the group, there was about $30,000 raised, and that was a while ago. So where are we with internal fundraising? And those are funds that you guys are keeping yourselves in your own bank account, correct?
To answer the first question, Counselor Fishbein, we raised $20,000 through a generous sponsorship through Cho. That will be paid in three installments. That is in the minutes from the directors' meetings, I think cited in two, one in the fall and one in the spring. The first installment was paid, that is sitting, good bless you, that is sitting in our, in our controller's budget line item right now. The second, two installments will be paid in each year following. So that's the $20,000 in the fundraising that we've initially received. The second donation is the fireworks through Masonicare. Excuse me. You won't see a line item. It's a gifting kind sponsorship, if you will. So there won't be any dollars that will be seen in a line item in the town budget. And that'll be recorded, of course, in the year 2020. So to date, our formal sponsorship and fundraising has not yet started. The marketing committee has just approved in the last meeting. The minutes are recorded online. The sponsorship forums through the generous donations of Gaylord Services with their design, their graphic designer. So you'll see that coming through formally in the next few months. That'll be kicking off as well. So we do hope to be offsetting any town contributions with a very active fundraising group. You'll see a formal fundraising cultivation program from the committee's corporate, if you will, overhead. And then you'll see a separate one specifically for the parade. Separate but equal will be also generally fundraising, but there'll be specific overtures to line items that Mr. Sullivan and his committee will be pursuing on behalf of the parade specifically, while the rest of the marketing committee will be on behalf of all the events and committees that are sponsored for the 2020 Jubilee. So yes, we have had some early fundraising success through the partnerships of some of our community entities like Cho and Masonicare. And you'll continue, I suspect, to see that. The very first one, I might add, was Counselors Sandry by donating our Google site, our very first donor back in 2016. So we would hope to continue that. But formally, right now, there isn't a lot you'll see yet related to that line item on income.
Has the group expended any funds as we sit here today? Because I don't have a budget, so I don't know where you are. Have you spent any money?
Yes. The line items are in the town budget in the controller's line item. So we centralized that through Mr. Bowes. But we've spent the $7,500 that was allocated to the town. We did spend on merchandising and marketing support and selling those wares at Celebrate Wallingford and some of the festivals. So you will see some of those that have been invested in. And then we hope that that will also be monies and income ripping out for collateral sales.
So all of the merchandise that was purchased has been sold?
Some has been sold, not to date. At this point, we still have about half of the inventory of socks and t-shirts available for sale. Stockpiled, if you will, for sale later on this year at Celebrate Wallingford and some area community festivals.
So as we sit here today, does anybody know how much money is in the bank?
Yes. When you look at, you mean in the line item for?
The only thing I have for a line item is an appropriation. I have no, I don't think there's any expenditures in this budget. All I have is...
There's $6,500 of income right now sitting in our, about 6,500. Nancy Miller is our CFO. You'll see the $6,500 about as income in our statement.
Right. So right now, you have a pledge of 20,000. You have income of 65. So you know, you can reasonably rely upon having 26,500 in the bank in a reasonable amount of time.
And that would be the first installment of the Cho balance. And that's really what you're seeing. What we were allocated in 2016 had been spent on branding and, as I mentioned, merchandising. So right now, you'll see the Cho balance in there right here.
Okay. Whatever you're looking at, I don't have, so that you know. So when you say you'll see the Cho balance, I can't see the Cho.
Counselor Fishbein, I think it's important to note that Chairman Sullivan is asking for $45,000 to start the parade. I mean, you're building, you've got to build a parade. The only way you can build a parade is to send certain parts or not an immediate donation to certain groups to get them to sign on to our parade. We're two years out. And that two years is going to go by so quickly, it's not even funny. But if we don't get these people on board and we don't get the donation sent to them, like the Mummers, the Mummers have been here in 1970, they've been here in 1995. If we don't line them up, this is a band that plays all across the country. They've played in Wallingford twice in the last 50 years. So what Chairman Sullivan is trying to do right now, aside from having money for his infrastructure to build the parade, he has to have money to be able to attract groups to come here. And if we don't have that money to do it, we're not going to have those groups.
So we're going to pay those groups before they?
You don't pay them before. You pay them a percentage to get them to sign on. That's how you build a parade.
Okay. So I'm just looking at, you know, the mayor made a decision not to make a payment on a fire truck. And, you know, and I'm seeing an expenditure here. You know, we're going to be having discussions about our schools and safety and that kind of stuff. And I see an expenditure here. And I'm just balancing, which is my job, these things. So when I'm hearing that, you know, we need to have money in the bank so we can show someone that we can pay them a percentage, you know, that's what I'm balancing, quite frankly.
That's exactly what we're trying to do too, counselor.
Is it possible we can get a copy of the budget that you're referring to?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then why would that be?
I don't have a copying machine.
Oh, no, I'm not saying tonight.
I understand.
Okay. You know, if you want to get a copy to Barbara, and she can send it to all of us, and we can, you know, so that we're somewhat, a little bit maybe, more informed.
Counselor Fishbein, let me give you the scope of this parade, just so you have a clear idea of how big this is supposed to be. My mission, I've already done a lot of research on the Church Sagittary Parade in 1970 and all the hard work that went into that. Now, things are a little simpler today because we're in the electronic age, and email is a much easier way, and Internet to attract different divisions, different organizations to participate. But what I'm looking to do is build a four-hour parade on June 20th, 2020, that will run from Dutton Park to Lyman Hall High School. I mean, that's about a 2.7-mile parade. And stacking all the side streets off of North Elm Street with divisions. And then as those divisions head down North Main, restacking those streets with more divisions. It is a logistical challenge. And in order to do that, we're going to need shuttle buses from Lyman Hall, where we will have everyone meet. We'll need communication systems. I've talked to the police chief. I talked to Public Works today. I've been in to see the mayor. We're trying to dot our i's across the t's. The $45,000, we need, and I'm not going to say outright to start spending, we're going to take a portion of that and budget it to units that we may have to provide some monetary assistance to to travel here. But we're going to set a certain part of that $45,000. We also need a Motorola communication system. And we've already talked about a temporary antenna on top of the police station that'll cover a three-mile radius. We've got to work with Durham Bus Company and see what the cost is. The police chief said he's going to work hard to take the overtime that will most likely be necessary for this event and put it in his budget. So we are, as far as cost goes, and sitting up there eight years as a counselor, I understand that this is taxpayer dollars. But in order to put an event like this together, I can't wait for fundraising money to come through. And I can't be expected to run out and try to fundraise and put this incredibly huge parade together. If I am, you need to find another chairman, because I've got a lot of other things that I got to get done too. This is going to be an event that children growing up will remember, just as you and I remember that 1970 parade. It seemed to go on forever, and it had so many wonderful participants. So that's what I'm trying to build here. This town is unique. We have a culture all our own. We have wonderful people who care and love this town. So I think it's time to celebrate this town. And this is the one opportunity we'll have. This will probably be my last opportunity at 59 years old to do this. So I want it to be grand. But I understand the implications on the taxpayer dollars too. So we're going to do the best we can with what we get. We've already brought in the parade chair and the organizer, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. She is now on board. We're also going up to Mystic. And we're going to meet that chair and get ideas from that chairman. We're signing on to Parade Cloud, which is a website that all major parades use. It has resources that no one else has. It's a cost item. We've gotten a grant, not through the town, but through my parade committee, to have someone create a website for us, which is currently under construction. And we're going to link it to the 350. I am learning so much. But in order to put this thing together, I can't wait for fundraising dollars to come through. We are going to provide Christina and Bob our thoughts on corporate solicitations for dollars. But we're two years out. We may not see that money until next year. And I can't wait that long.
So since we're dealing with a finite group, I mean, after 2020, after this event, I would expect there would be no need for the group to continue unless there's something, I don't know.
Correct. We will cease to exist June 27th, 2020.
Is there some sort of arrangement? What happens to the money if there's money left?
Because we're a town committee, and I will defer, I don't see Mr. Bowes here, I would assume the money goes right back into the town budget. We assume nothing. That's why the structure was set up accordingly. And I'm sorry, Counselor Fishbein, the information that our CFO, Nancy Miller, just provided, all this detail is provided in our March directors' meeting, which is posted online. So if you do need, and we'll get copies to all of you as well. But this is part of public record already last month. You did not allocate any money officially in the town budget last year. All the money that we used was from fundraising. So just, you know, to settle the allocation and appropriation of where the town money might have gone from last year, there was none from last year.
Yeah, it was the year before. It was the 7,500.
Correct. Yeah. And that's all posted online. And we'll get copies right back out to you. But any extra monies, again, we're going to be very cautious about raising only as much as we need, is all just considered surplus revenue.
That's why I asked initially, are you maintaining your own bank account or things going through the town?
Every single penny is through the town. Jimbo's line item. Everything is deposited right through the tax assessor's office the same day, any monies raised.
So in effect, because that helps clear up something here, as a result of this, you're not going to get a check?
No.
You're essentially being pledged by the town, this is what we'll give you towards this next year if you need it. That's essentially what's happening here.
Listen, everything that comes, everything that we purchase has to be agreed by you folks.
No, I understand. But when we look at this budget, this particular budget page, a lot of these groups just get a check, which I'm now hearing is different. And that's why coming into tonight with no backup, I had no idea how this was being handled. So that helps.
Yeah, no. And we came to you probably a year ago with our setup originally that we were going to, and again, this is just to refresh you, refresh everybody's minds. We set this up very transparently, that there would be no money allocated, that there is no dollar received from us. We'll go, we centralize everything through our town organizations, including purchasing and through finance. And that way, when we say that money's being approved, or we have an RFP or a contract that needs to be vetted, it goes directly from vendor to the town.
And actually, when Celebrate Wallingford happened this past fall, all the monies that were gained from Celebrate Wallingford the very next day went to Jimbo's and was put in the bank.
Yeah, that's right. That was just my final question, just to make sure.
Full accounting of everything.
When you sold the merchandise that you used the $7,500 to get, you didn't keep that or anything? That went to the town? I've got to know.
Again, yes. Every money coming in, every allocation going out, from the town to the service provider through that. The hubcap, let me remind you too, since we'll be at some point looking at the store and selling our merchandise, not just at festival kiosks or at Celebrate Wallingford, we will be formalizing a store presence at some point in the future, of course, within the next two years. That headquarters store is at the hubcap. It will be centralized through that, of course, as well as through the town in the same setup. So anytime that we start to talk about those proceeds, the merchandising, the inventory controls, the procurement, income expenses, all of that budget and all that corporate management, all of that retail pieces that have to be vetted through, including the security of all of that, will be bonded through the town, of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you for your time. Up next is Wallingford Center, Inc., immediately followed by the WCI Facade Capital Program. Good evening.
Good evening.
Remind us who you are for the record, please.
Elizabeth Landau, Executive Director of WCI.
Stephen Lazarus, Vice President of WCI.
Do you have any introductory remarks, or shall we just?
We had a good year. We look forward to another.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Fishbein? Counselor Morganstein?
Hi. Before I ask my question, can I just get a definition of the difference between Wallingford Center, Inc. and the facade and capital? They're two separate things on our agenda.
Sure. The facade capital is a grant, basically, that we run through the town for any of the merchants that want to do any improvements to the facade of their store. We are allotted $5,000 a year. We usually ask for more, but we've been getting $5,000. What the merchant will do is they will contact me, they will give us design of what exactly they want to do. It has to be to the facade. It can't be to anything to the inside. And that money is approved. We have a design committee on WCI who goes out and checks it out. We have a wonderful architect that will go and give them advice for the facade. And then what I do is I apply to the town for that money. If we don't use all 5,000, it's not used. So we kind of draw it from the town. So that's why that's a separate.
So that's simply that. I wasn't sure what the word "capital" added, if that was something else. Okay. So Wallingford Center, Inc., I'm familiar with the hubcap. Can you tell me, since it's coming into being, moving forward to now, there were certain visions for people perhaps using the space if they didn't have their own office, coming in and using it in that realm. What do you see happening at this point, activity-wise, in the hubcap space, kind of weekdays, where we're at with our investment?
Well, first of all, the hubcap is not part of Wallingford Center. We're here to talk about Wallingford Center. The hubcap, we rent space in the hubcap. So the hubcap is its own entity.
So it's that, okay.
Yeah. So I'm certainly answer questions, but it doesn't really take anything from the town. So that's really not what we're here to talk about.
Okay. So, and that's again, me trying to be clear on it all.
Absolutely. I understand.
So the rent for the space is paid by who?
Rentals that come in. And Wallingford Center is one of the rentals.
Okay. So the town is paying what portion of that building's rent? When we're looking here and saying $84,000 is requested, how much of that?
We pay $500 a month for rent, just exactly what we paid for when we had another rent, which wasn't part of the hubcap.
Okay. So we, the town is not paying the rent for that whole building?
No, it's part of our budget, and it's what we would pay if I was renting 261 Center Street, which is what I did before.
Okay. And so as Craig said, we simply have a page, and it has a dollar amount.
Oh, absolutely.
And it really doesn't have all the breakdown. So this total amount that you're requesting, can you give me a bit of an oversight of what that covers?
Sure. It covers my salary. It covers our rent. It covers advertising for certain events. It covers pretty much all our operating expenses. And then we raise whatever we need to fulfill anything that we do through the year.
Actually, there is a budget on the page immediately following page 44.
Ah, oh, I'm sorry.
We have street scape. We have flowers that we plant. We have repairs for all different things. So in Christmas decorations, it's all included in that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I guess there was a next page. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. No, I was concerned that we were funding the entire rent. That was, that was a big part of money.
It's all a part of. And then we raise the other $80,000 through different things.
In fact, it's actually remarkable that we pay as little rent as we do.
No, that's an incredibly low amount. Yeah.
It's incredibly frugal.
It really is. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
From the council on Wallingford Center, Inc. There being none, we'll move on to the facade program. Questions? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we go through this every year.
I know. I'm prepared.
Hand up with her.
I'm glad. Good team. So one of my concerns is that, you know, every year I've asked about the utilization of the funds, and I hear that they're being used, you know, we use the five grand every year. But then I'm looking at the line, and the last year that we have the total expenditure from this account was year ending 2017, June 30th, 2017. And this reflects that that year you only used $3,300. And that's of concern.
I think, I think there was a crossover, because I think one got paid towards the end. But I do know that we got, we did the 5,000 last year. But there might have been where I took it after July 1st and went into this one. Because I do have, actually, I don't have last year's. I went through and got this year's. But this year is completely used. It will be completely used by July 30th. And then I have another one for $1,500 for next year already.
All right. So we've already pledged out the five grand that you got for the present year?
Yes, we have.
We're already?
Yeah. I have Catalyst Art Studio for 500, Craftivate for 800, Design House for 1,000, Words on Woods for 900. Then I have two more for 900, Christopher Michael Salon and Alyssa's Cakery. We did one, two, three, four, five, seven blade signs, six blade signs. And then I have $1,500 for Split Art Studio, which is doing a major improvement. Another thing that I would like to say is people would do larger improvements if we could give them more money. A lot of times, they come to me, and they think, oh, you have $5,000. You can give me all that $5,000 if I do a $10,000 improvement. The way it works is we, right now, can give them up to half of their project, we can give them half of their project up to $1,500. And a lot of times, they have a larger project that they want to do. And if they could get more money, they would do it. And it sometimes does deter them from doing the project. And it sometimes does deter them from doing the project. If we had a little bit more money that we could up that, maybe up to $2,000 or $2,500, it would entice them to do a larger, better improvement.
So, so you make the rules as to the up to $1,500?
That was the way it was established, and we established the grant through the town. We'd like to, I would love to see it improve, increase a little bit.
So did this body approve that, or you did it internally?
No, it was, we, this body approved it years about, eight years ago when I first took over.
So, I mean, just speaking for myself, you know, I would be open to
To that suggestion.
To looking at that. And then, you know, because as I drive Center Street, which is really predominantly where this happens, right?
Correct.
I see a lot of good stuff, you know, we finally got the hubcap sign done, you know, and it looks good.
It looks good, and the blade signs look beautiful, I think.
So, you know, I would rather have you max out by November and come back to us and say, hey, we got three more. You know, can we have a little bit more money?
Well, Counselor Fishbein, I would be tempted next year when we apply for money. In the past, we've said, okay, we have a program. We never give out more than $1,500. So we have kind of limited impact, and we've kind of gone back and forth and said in the end, well, here's $5,000. Do what you can with that. I would be tempted to come back to the council next year and say, we would like $5,000, as we've done in the past, but we'd like another $5,000 that's designated for a larger project. So that we would, and that we would only spend that money if we had a larger project. We are, we've had delightful little sweet impacts on Center Street, but we've not been able to encourage anything bigger than that. And so this would be a way of, of kind of buying into a little bit more impact on Center Street.
Yeah, you know, because we sort of wrestle every year about, you know, well, you're asking for 10. You only got five, you know, do you really need 10? And we go back and forth.
Yeah.
This is the first year that I'm hearing, you know, that we could use the 10.
Well, we could use the 10, though, if we use it for a little bit bigger project. I think that would be the thing that would make it more attractive to you, and frankly, much more attractive to us. We would like to have a bigger impact on downtown.
So, you know, I'm open to whatever discussions you want to have with regard to that. And, and certainly, you know, if we, in our budget stuff, you know, gave you the 10 with some sort of, you know, agreement that we're going to deal with that language, that would be acceptable to you.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I, since it's on one line, facade and capital, do you want me to just go to capital?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. So last year, the capital was, it was originally 40, became 20 for the benches.
Yes. Yes.
I see 20 here again. What are we doing with it?
We have a lot of repairs and things this year. We had flags, new, new American flags. We had the poles. I'd really like to, with this one, get aluminum poles. I'm spending so much money every year on wooden poles, and they break. And then it seems I have to go and buy 189 new wooden poles almost every year. Aluminum poles are a lot more expensive, but it would be an expense that we wouldn't have to, you know, hopefully, they would last 10 years. We also have a lot of, the planters are starting to break. We need to repair those. Those are about $600 apiece. I've been talking to the mayor for years about, I would love to be able to do some sort of planters along the cemetery wall, just to brighten that up. And that's another thing that, each one is only about $400, but that means plants to go in that and watering the plants and all that. So my wish list is actually about $40,000, but I was trying to be conservative and asked for 20 this year and, and little by little, start to do these repairs and replacement of things that, there's a lot of things that, I've been here for 10 years, and there's a lot of things that are 10 years old, and they're starting to need repair and replacement.
So last year, I thought all of the money was supposed to go for the benches?
That was two years ago.
Okay. So.
It was two years ago. And then this year, we did some for the flags. We did, we used some money. I think I still have $5,000 in there, which I would like to replace the planters. I think we've only used about $14,000 or $15,000 of that $20,000. We have not used all $20,000 yet. And what I did is I replaced some Christmas lights, some Christmas, we had to do all the new bows for the Christmas, for the Christmas wreaths. So that was what we used this year. So a lot of it was replacing and repairing capital items that we have. I don't know if they're capital because they don't last that long, but we, you know, it really should be more of a streetscape capital than a capital, because it's stuff that doesn't last forever.
So all the benches that you intended on replacing two years ago, have they been replaced?
Yes, they've all been replaced.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
Because the ones that I see up here at least are, they're not.
They're all, they're all done. The whole entire town is done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pretty close to this because I see on a daily basis what happens in downtown. But I just want to talk a little bit about the, what, what happens down there with the facade improvement money that people don't realize. But because of Wallingford Center, the blade sign program has been a huge success. So what it's done is, instead of businesses in a hodgepodge way of making all different signs, all different configurations, Liz is, Elizabeth has been very good talking to the businesses and getting them all in one size and one, not one style, but pretty close. And it, it, it brings a continuity coming down the street. Over the years, as far as big projects, the block that I'm in and Elizabeth is in with, with Wallingford Center and the hubcap, my store and the business is next to us, is owned by one landlord. And because of the facade program, those storefronts were going to be an absolute disaster. He was going to do them over, and it was going to be an absolute disaster. Thanks to Steve Lazarus and a few others that worked with him, worked with this landlord and said, look, we can get you some facade money, but we really need to have you do it this way. And that's the result of a good portion of that block being the way that it is, is because of this facade program. So, you know, it, it really works through zoning. We cannot have design review committee, you know, you can't do that type of thing, so I'm told through zoning. But when we're investing money, when Wallingford Center is investing money in the downtown, as little as it is to spark a program, the landlords are more apt to work and listen to the design review committee for them. And they, they like what they see, and mostly because of the work that Elizabeth does, the background work, but because of what Steve Lazarus does as an architect. He can suggest colors, styles, and it's, it's been a huge success down there. And we've gone from some near misses, when I say near misses, that the buildings wouldn't look the way they do. And we're very fortunate that it's, everything has turned out well. And it's, it's, it just, I can't say enough good things about it. Elizabeth, with the, the flags, just so people understand, when you say replacing flags, it's not just like your household flag with one or two flags, it's all numbers. Can you give us some kind of numbers? How many flags are there?
Well, we have 189 poles.
Okay.
We have the American flags, which probably take the biggest hit because they're up the longest. And a lot of times they last a year, or they, you know, they start to fade, they get torn, they fall down. I find them on my front step, and they're all messed up. And, and then we have celebrate flags, and we also have holiday flags. So we have, that's a total of almost 600 flags that we have.
What would you say, you know, dollar-wise, when you have to replace flags, what kind of money are you looking at?
Well, when we have to replace the American flags, they're about $25 each a flag. But when we have to replace the Christmas flags, the holiday flags, or the celebrate flags, those are, I think, $65 a flag because they're custom-made.
So it doesn't take long to come up with real numbers?
Oh, no. It's, you know, and then the poles are the worst thing because the poles are up all year long. That's why I really think if we could get aluminum poles, it would look nicer, and they're much more sturdy. I mean, we're constantly, I just got a phone call yesterday from Steve Palermo saying, you know, I need another 60 poles. We put up all the Christmas, all the, I'm sorry, all the American flags. He said, I need another 49 flags, and I need another, at least 50 or 60 poles.
Yeah. I, I agree with you because I know I have people, when you're not there, and you know I bring them over to you, but the, the flags come down. I seem to be the repository for flags. And, and it's, I could see where the wooden poles, poles or the composite poles are breaking, or they're warping.
They're bending.
They're bending. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea to go to the aluminum. But I, I just wanted to bring that up to, to just give folks, you know, it's not just, people are probably home saying, well, what's the big deal? It's one or two flags. But you multiply that amount times 20 or 30 in a season, it becomes real money. So, okay, thank you.
Counselors Andrew?
Thank you. Most of my questions were answered by Counselor Letourneau, but, because they were all flag-based. But what is the difference in the cost between the wooden poles and the aluminum poles?
The wooden poles, I believe, are $10, and the aluminum poles are about 24. It's about half.
Have you, do you have any experience? Have you used any aluminum poles elsewhere?
I have not. I have not. It would be nice to just get a few and try them and see how they do in each one area.
That was, that was basically where my question was going to go.
You know, I, my thought was to do up here and just see how they do. But I do think, I'm, my hope would be that they'd be a lot sturdier.
Well, that was kind of where I was going with that. If you could get a small, I don't know what they come in, like a dozen or a gross could be almost everything that you need, but.
I do believe that they come in a dozen.
If you could get a dozen, and they, and if you're going through the wooden ones at least, you know, if you're going through 189 in a year, you know you're breaking them all within a year. And the aluminum poles being, you know, two and a half times more expensive last five, it's a no-brainer.
Right. Correct.
So I mean, for
That's a good idea.
You know, maybe just for some sort of a reference going forward.
Yep. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Counsel Letourneau, getting it like, so you wrapped up all the other questions I had, so.
Any other questions? There being none, and, oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
There being none and no, no further business on the agenda, motion to adjourn is appropriate.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.